I'm not from Holmdel, but I've played at Cross Farms Field since like second grade, so I've been enjoying its beauty for awhile. I represent the New Jersey Sierra Club. Among other things, we try to promote and practice responsible uses of the ecosystem and its resources. In New Jersey, we're about 79,000 members. Nationwide, we've about 3 million. The New Jersey Sierra Club believes that this application should be rejected. This is an industrial use in an environmentally sensitive and residential area, and this use is not permitted in this zone. This project will cause harm to the environment, will hurt the aesthetics of the scenic and pristine area. New Jersey Natural Gas's regulatory station would ruin preserved farmland in Holmdel, potentially contaminate drinking water and pristine waterways, and create safety concerns for communities. The project should be rejected because it does not meet critical beneficial use. The court case, Merisi versus BPR Company, determined that in order for a project to obtain a conditional use variance, they must be used for public good. This means the positives outweigh the negatives of the development. A natural gas regulator station would create public detriment without public good. As a use variance, the public detriment including water and air pollution far outweighs any public benefit. The town should not be changing its zoning for this project. The council must uphold the zoning and master plan, and also uphold the integrity of the character of Holmdel. There are other places this regulator station can be without causing so much environmental and public impacts. And the question the gentleman tried to raise before was, there are other three non-Holmdel New Jersey Natural Gas alternative sites, or this alternative sites, that were not viable. Why weren't they viable, and why are we seeing more alternatives? The zoning board should reject New Jersey Natural Gas's application, just like they did two years ago. Thanks.
Thank you.
Janet Neese, Seven Country Squire Lane, Holmdel, New Jersey. I also want to reiterate about disingenuousness. It reminded me of the movie Erin Brockovich, which was with Pacific Electric and Gas. And that company was saying, "No, no problem, no problem, no problem." And it turned out, there were problems, and it went into the drinking water. So when I hear that we have this watershed, and I'm not as familiar as some of the others, but I hear that the watershed could, we could end up having a problem with the water, I worry about that. I also have a letter that I want to read from Christine McNamara, who couldn't be here. McNamara, M-C-N-A-M-A-R-A, 13 Noelwood Drive, Noelwood Road, sorry, Holmdel, New Jersey. Dear zoning board members, I'm writing you to express my extreme opposition to New Jersey Natural Gas's proposal to build a gas regulator station at 960 Holmdel Road. I'm actively against this potentially damaging project and the unnecessary risks it brings to our community. I am unable to attend the zoning meeting tonight to express my feelings in person, as I will be attending a fundraiser for the Village School PSA, but wanted to make clear my position as a resident about this potential project. I'm a resident of Holmdel with my husband and daughter. She attends Holmdel Village School and is currently in kindergarten. We chose Holmdel over other communities as the place to buy a home, because we value the safety of the town, the green space, and the property values. As a resident, I do not want Holmdel to become more industrialized with these kinds of projects that can damage all of those things. I do not want this kind of an industrial property in our town at all, let alone close to the school and our water supply. Please know, I will join my neighbors and community to work vigorously to oppose this project if it moves forward. This is not what your constituency wants in our town. Please do the right thing for Holmdel and do not approve this project. Thank you for your attention, Christine.
Thank you. I guess by asking you that, the class is not working.
Yes, Scott Goldstein, 24 East Lawn Drive. 24 East Lawn Drive, Holmdel. You don't know what you don't know, okay? We know the gas company puts communities at risk. We know this since the U.S. Department of Transportation retains a national database of gas and oil pipeline failures, which has cost billions and hundreds of lives. We know the gas and oil industry gets preferential treatment and loopholes, which exempts them from disclosing hazardous chemicals they use, and exempts them from having to report on contaminated land, water, and air. And presently, from my understanding of the law, there's a stay on the EPA, so they don't have to do any of this. Not a wonderful loophole. We know the gas and oil companies are driven to make maximum profit, have a well history of putting the public at rest. The DOT, Department of Transportation Pipeline Database, is a federal response to help communities like us combat the systemic industrial problem. We know New Jersey Natural Gas still has unprotected iron and steel pipe line service in the ground. We know New Jersey Natural Gas failed to report data from the last number of years of the pipeline failure. We know that New Jersey's natural gas design is not protective against attacks from terrorists in 2018 or the future. This is our reality. It sucks. Sorry for the language. We know that New Jersey Natural Gas has not disclosed specifics on chemicals, on hazardous chemicals used in the heated water bath. We all own closed systems, our cars. They leak! Okay? Where's this going to go? Into the ground. We know New Jersey Gas does not have a plan to prevent terrorist attacks on pipelines and regulators. The shut-off valves are located at the proposed station, and would promptly be damaged and made inoperable. 1994 Durham Woods Apartments, they couldn't shut it off for three days. It burned, okay? Multiple, 17 apartment buildings went down. One person had a heart attack and died. We know that gas lines leak, okay? Gas, gas regulators also leak gas. You can smell it at the leak from regulator. Operation Gas Blowdowns, okay, or the flare-ups that that's said is talked about, intentional perching of gas will contaminate our land, water, and air. Air contamination is 20 times more damaging to the ozone unless for 20 years compared to carbon dioxide. The natural gas industry has done a wonderful marketing job convincing us that it's clean energy. Well, guess what? 20 times more damaging to ozone. Caught me by surprise, too. Holmdel's Southern Slope is the watershed for Swimming River and 350,000 New Jersey American water customers, plus everybody else that gets water from the English Town Aquifer, which is over 600,000 people. As of 2017 census, makes Monmouth the state's fifth most populous county, representing a decrease of 0.6% from 2010, or a population reduction by almost 400,000, which is 2.3 times the population of Holmdel. Do we really need another gas line? Population data doesn't support it. Okay? The benefits of a gas regulated Holmdel are minuscule compared to the real risks to our community's land, water, air, property value, safety, security, and the health and well-being of our children and families. New Jersey Natural Gas can find a better place, create a better design, and do a better job in serving their customers without putting Holmdel at risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. My name is Kin G., 8 St. Street, Holmdel, New Jersey. Kin, K-I-N, as in mix-up of D. That's it. Last name is G. as in George, G-B. That's it. Nice to meet you. I didn't come here when they prepared comments. As I sat here, it struck me, hearing the testimony, how familiar the story is. As some of you know, I've been part of a resident group that fought against a electrical transmission line, the famous or infamous JCP and L Monmouth County Villaroy project. And it's amazing, in the two years we had, in the 682-page petition that they had, they had an army of experts that says, "No EMF impact to residents, zero property value impact to residents who live along the railway line. There's a dire consequences if the transmission line is not allowed to be built." I only bring that up as an analogy, because utility companies are private companies. They're really, despite the term "public utility," a lot of times, they don't have "public" in common, in their minds. So, they actually have options. They have things they want to do. But when they bring expert witnesses, guess what? They're not going to say anything bad about that. You know that, we know that, use your common sense, right? They're going to shop. I'd love to go to the utility case where once, for once, an expert witness said, "This project is terrible, but you know what? I'm getting paid a zillion dollars to do this." So first and foremost, I urge you, you hear a lot of expert witnesses that testify on certain things. Just take that with a grain of salt. Take that with a grain of salt, and if defies common sense, maybe there's a reason for that. Second is, they have options. They have options or solutions that you may not be aware of. You don't have jurisdiction to dictate what options they go and pursue. What you do have is the veto power to not approve certain plans. So take all that into consideration. In our case, we went through a two-year process, a judge listened to all kinds of legal expert testimony, and she came back, this is in official record, she said, "Oh my God, JCP and L is trying to use an elephant gun to shoot a gnat." This is probably not as bad as that, but use your common sense, hear what the residents are saying, hear what they're saying, balance that, take a lot of stuff with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Terry Warner, 35 Blackwood Drive, in Holmdel. I'm going to make this short, I'm at the end. I have the answer. Okay, everybody's been asked it. You can all search it, I wasn't prepared to bring all the paperwork I have here, but you can search it on the internet. Just look for pipe diameter gas explosions. You'll see all the tables there. Look at Edison. We have the same pipeline coming into here as Edison had. 10 people were injured, dozens of homes were burned. And why, why am I making such a big issue of it? When you take the diameter of the pipes and the pressure of it, the blast area is about 800 feet. So whoever's living, that's fire. Okay? I used to be a fireman. So, we never had training on gas explosions. I was there for 10 years. But you got fire out to 800 feet. That commercial building won't be, most of it won't be there. I haven't seen the latest maps. It substantially changed from the last time I was involved, so I'm a little nervous here, sorry. But that's, that's the end of my speech. You can look it all up. And, oh, by the way, the tables are a little too small. When you look at the actual data from the government, it's 25% larger, so that 800 would go to over 1,000 feet. Oh, I didn't, I wanted to be last one.
Now you are it. 3:30. Carol.
I do. My name is Ken G., 8 St. Street, Holmdel, New Jersey. Ken, K-I-N, as in mix-up of D. That's it. Last name is G. as in George, G-B. That's it. Nice to meet you. I didn't come here when they prepared comments. As I sat here, it struck me, hearing the testimony, how familiar the story is. As some of you know, I've been part of a resident group that fought against a electrical transmission line, the famous or infamous JCP and L Monmouth County Villaroy project. And it's amazing, in the two years we had, in the 682-page petition that they had, they had an army of experts that says, "No EMF impact to residents, zero property value impact to residents who live along the railway line. There's a dire consequences if the transmission line is not allowed to be built." I only bring that up as an analogy, because utility companies are private companies. They're really, despite the term "public utility," a lot of times, they don't have "public" in common, in their minds. So, they actually have options. They have things they want to do. But when they bring expert witnesses, guess what? They're not going to say anything bad about that. You know that, we know that, use your common sense, right? They're going to shop. I'd love to go to the utility case where once, for once, an expert witness said, "This project is terrible, but you know what? I'm getting paid a zillion dollars to do this." So first and foremost, I urge you, you hear a lot of expert witnesses that testify on certain things. Just take that with a grain of salt. Take that with a grain of salt, and if defies common sense, maybe there's a reason for that. Second is, they have options. They have options or solutions that you may not be aware of. You don't have jurisdiction to dictate what options they go and pursue. What you do have is the veto power to not approve certain plans. So take all that into consideration. In our case, we went through a two-year process, a judge listened to all kinds of legal expert testimony, and she came back, this is in official record, she said, "Oh my God, JCP and L is trying to use an elephant gun to shoot a gnat." This is probably not as bad as that, but use your common sense, hear what the residents are saying, hear what they're saying, balance that, take a lot of stuff with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Yes, I do. Terry Warner, 35 Blackwood Drive, in Holmdel. I'm going to make this short, I'm at the end. I have the answer. Okay, everybody's been asked it. You can all search it, I wasn't prepared to bring all the paperwork I have here, but you can search it on the internet. Just look for pipe diameter gas explosions. You'll see all the tables there. Look at Edison. We have the same pipeline coming into here as Edison had. 10 people were injured, dozens of homes were burned. And why, why am I making such a big issue of it? When you take the diameter of the pipes and the pressure of it, the blast area is about 800 feet. So whoever's living, that's fire. Okay? I used to be a fireman. So, we never had training on gas explosions. I was there for 10 years. But you got fire out to 800 feet. That, that commercial building won't be, most of it won't be there. I haven't seen the latest maps. It substantially changed from the last time I was involved, so I'm a little nervous here, sorry. But that's, that's the end of my speech. You can look it all up. And, oh, by the way, the tables are a little too small. It's, when you look at the actual data from the government, it's 25% larger, so that 800 would go to over 1,000 feet. Oh, I didn't, I wanted to be last one.
Now you are it. 3:30. Carol.
I do. My name is Ken G., 8 St. Street, Holmdel, New Jersey. Ken, K-I-N, as in mix-up of D. That's it. Last name is G. as in George, G-B. That's it. Nice to meet you. I didn't come here when they prepared comments. As I sat here, it struck me, hearing the testimony, how familiar the story is. As some of you know, I've been part of a resident group that fought against a electrical transmission line, the famous or infamous JCP and L Monmouth County Villaroy project. And it's amazing, in the two years we had, in the 682-page petition that they had, they had an army of experts that says, "No EMF impact to residents, zero property value impact to residents who live along the railway line. There's a dire consequences if the transmission line is not allowed to be built." I only bring that up as an analogy, because utility companies are private companies. They're really, despite the term "public utility," a lot of times, they don't have "public" in common, in their minds. So, they actually have options. They have things they want to do. But when they bring expert witnesses, guess what? They're not going to say anything bad about that. You know that, we know that, use your common sense, right? They're going to shop. I'd love to go to the utility case where once, for once, an expert witness said, "This project is terrible, but you know what? I'm getting paid a zillion dollars to do this." So first and foremost, I urge you, you hear a lot of expert witnesses that testify on certain things. Just take that with a grain of salt. Take that with a grain of salt, and if defies common sense, maybe there's a reason for that. Second is, they have options. They have options or solutions that you may not be aware of. You don't have jurisdiction to dictate what options they go and pursue. What you do have is the veto power to not approve certain plans. So take all that into consideration. In our case, we went through a two-year process, a judge listened to all kinds of legal expert testimony, and she came back, this is in official record, she said, "Oh my God, JCP and L is trying to use an elephant gun to shoot a gnat." This is probably not as bad as that, but use your common sense, hear what the residents are saying, hear what they're saying, balance that, take a lot of stuff with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Yes, I do. My name is Ken G., 8 St. Street, Holmdel, New Jersey. Ken, K-I-N, as in mix-up of D. That's it. Last name is G. as in George, G-B. That's it. Nice to meet you. I didn't come here when they prepared comments. As I sat here, it struck me, hearing the testimony, how familiar the story is. As some of you know, I've been part of a resident group that fought against a electrical transmission line, the famous or infamous JCP and L Monmouth County Villaroy project. And it's amazing, in the two years we had, in the 682-page petition that they had, they had an army of experts that says, "No EMF impact to residents, zero property value impact to residents who live along the railway line. There's a dire consequences if the transmission line is not allowed to be built." I only bring that up as an analogy, because utility companies are private companies. They're really, despite the term "public utility," a lot of times, they don't have "public" in common, in their minds. So, they actually have options. They have things they want to do. But when they bring expert witnesses, guess what? They're not going to say anything bad about that. You know that, we know that, use your common sense, right? They're going to shop. I'd love to go to the utility case where once, for once, an expert witness said, "This project is terrible, but you know what? I'm getting paid a zillion dollars to do this." So first and foremost, I urge you, you hear a lot of expert witnesses that testify on certain things. Just take that with a grain of salt. Take that with a grain of salt, and if defies common sense, maybe there's a reason for that. Second is, they have options. They have options or solutions that you may not be aware of. You don't have jurisdiction to dictate what options they go and pursue. What you do have is the veto power to not approve certain plans. So take all that into consideration. In our case, we went through a two-year process, a judge listened to all kinds of legal expert testimony, and she came back, this is in official record, she said, "Oh my God, JCP and L is trying to use an elephant gun to shoot a gnat." This is probably not as bad as that, but use your common sense, hear what the residents are saying, hear what they're saying, balance that, take a lot of stuff with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Warner, 35 Blackwood Drive, in Holmdel. I'm going to make this short, I'm at the end. I have the answer. Okay, everybody's been asked it. You can all search it, I wasn't prepared to bring all the paperwork I have here, but you can search it on the internet. Just look for pipe diameter gas explosions. You'll see all the tables there. Look at Edison. We have the same pipeline coming into here as Edison had. 10 people were injured, dozens of homes were burned. And why, why am I making such a big issue of it? When you take the diameter of the pipes and the pressure of it, the blast area is about 800 feet. So whoever's living, that's fire. Okay? I used to be a fireman. So, we never had training on gas explosions. I was there for 10 years. But you got fire out to 800 feet. That, that commercial building won't be, most of it won't be there. I haven't seen the latest maps. It substantially changed from the last time I was involved, so I'm a little nervous here, sorry. But that's, that's the end of my speech. You can look it all up. And, oh, by the way, the tables are a little too small. It's, when you look at the actual data from the government, it's 25% larger, so that 800 would go to over 1,000 feet. Oh, I didn't, I wanted to be last one.
Now you are it. 3:30. Carol.
I do. My name is Ken G., 8 St. Street, Holmdel, New Jersey. Ken, K-I-N, as in mix-up of D. That's it. Last name is G. as in George, G-B. That's it. Nice to meet you. I didn't come here when they prepared comments. As I sat here, it struck me, hearing the testimony, how familiar the story is. As some of you know, I've been part of a resident group that fought against a electrical transmission line, the famous or infamous JCP and L Monmouth County Villaroy project. And it's amazing, in the two years we had, in the 682-page petition that they had, they had an army of experts that says, "No EMF impact to residents, zero property value impact to residents who live along the railway line. There's a dire consequences if the transmission line is not allowed to be built." I only bring that up as an analogy, because utility companies are private companies. They're really, despite the term "public utility," a lot of times, they don't have "public" in common, in their minds. So, they actually have options. They have things they want to do. But when they bring expert witnesses, guess what? They're not going to say anything bad about that. You know that, we know that, use your common sense, right? They're going to shop. I'd love to go to the utility case where once, for once, an expert witness said, "This project is terrible, but you know what? I'm getting paid a zillion dollars to do this." So first and foremost, I urge you, you hear a lot of expert witnesses that testify on certain things. Just take that with a grain of salt. Take that with a grain of salt, and if defies common sense, maybe there's a reason for that. Second is, they have options. They have options or solutions that you may not be aware of. You don't have jurisdiction to dictate what options they go and pursue. What you do have is the veto power to not approve certain plans. So take all that into consideration. In our case, we went through a two-year process, a judge listened to all kinds of legal expert testimony, and she came back, this is in official record, she said, "Oh my God, JCP and L is trying to use an elephant gun to shoot a gnat." This is probably not as bad as that, but use your common sense, hear what the residents are saying, hear what they're saying, balance that, take a lot of stuff with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The hearing is closed, and now the board is going to have a discussion amongst itself on the record as to its thoughts, and then we'll have a vote. So, this is our discussion in terms of our view of the evidence and testimony and any comments. And so, does anybody have any thoughts they'd like to discuss?
I do. It was talked about, our requirements, in weighing the pros and the cons, if it was proven that this was in the public interest. And it's been mentioned several times, that there are no substantial detrimental effects to our community, and I disagree with that a little hardly. I actually do think there's evidence in the record that talks about negative effects. I asked Mr. Otto if perception can affect markets, and he said yes. There is clearly a perception here in our community that there will be, there will be an effect, not only on the real estate values that are nearby, but on a going concern business that many of us in this community enjoy. So I do believe that there's evidence in the record for that. I do believe that perception does move markets, and there's clearly a negative perception as to how allowing this to come in could affect our community.
Well, I took a look at the sales that Mr. Otto supplied, and I can find paired sales that go in the opposite direction. So for a sale that he introduces that shows that there's no effect, I can find a sale in another part of town with a similar house of age, size, condition, etc., that sold for hundreds of thousands of dollars more. So, I don't feel that testimony has weighed that I'm willing to consider that study. I don't think it supports the conclusion that the applicant wants us to reach. So, I agree with you, Chris. I don't feel that, I feel that we all have, that we, I have a concern, obviously you have a concern, that there's an economic impact on the community from having the regulator station there, and I don't feel the applicant introduced testimony to counter that feeling.
Well, you know, you guys kind of, you know, solidified my thoughts. I mean, the irony is, is that the regulator station that permitted use of this property does allow for that to be there had there been no other use, nothing else that existed on this property.
we're talking about the coldest winter months of the year. The second and third steps, as Ms. Caphone represented, require the board to identify any substantial detrimental impact that may be present in connection with the proposed use. And if substantial detriment is in fact present, then the board may be permitted to impose reasonable conditions if necessary. As to both of these steps, you've heard repeated testimony from NJNG's experts and professionals that there will be no detrimental impacts, but more importantly, no substantial detrimental impacts. Even if some nominal impacts are present, NJNG has already imposed reasonable conditions to fully mitigate those impacts, including the construction of a sound wall, the inclusion of a retaining wall, a berm, fencing, and a robust landscaping plan that hides the facility from public view. As we have demonstrated, the station will be concealed from public view, the neighboring property owners will not be able to hear it, there will be no impacts to air quality or water quality, and as a result, no impacts to the health of neighboring residents, animals, or crops. There will be no odors, there will be no impact to the value of surrounding residential or commercial or agricultural properties, there will be no impact to the municipality from a fiscal perspective, and there will be practically no traffic impacts. And finally, the station will be safe. The fourth step, fourth step that the board must weigh, in this instance, is they must weigh the positive benefits in connection with the negative, and in this context, the board must identify whether the continued provision of heat and hot water to every resident in Homedale is outweighed or is not outweighed by the impacts that have been described on the record. The law requires, when the board assesses any of the impacts, in the case of an inherently beneficial use, those impacts must be substantial in order to overcome the positive benefits of the use. And under the law, any negative impact that the board may find must be based upon evidence that's in the record, not merely speculation or conjecture. In this regard, there is no qualified expert testimony that would demonstrate any substantial impact that would exceed the benefits afforded to almost every single Homedale resident here. Now, there has been a suggestion that I'd like to address, that the board's ability to mitigate perceived detrimental impacts extends so far as to permit the board to require a heater that is alternative to the heater proposed by NJNG. I would again remind the board that the jurisdiction to design NJNG's gas system, including the designation of the equipment most appropriate for that gas system, rests solely within the jurisdiction of the gas company and the Board of Public Utilities. So any suggestion or determination by the board that NJNG must install a heater chosen by the board or by the board engineer, instead of the heater proposed by NJNG, would amount to nothing less than a disregard of the statutory framework and the use law governing public utilities. I'm also concerned that we, when we've been discussing this idea of who has jurisdiction to design this regulator station, we haven't spent enough time talking about what, why the public utility law requires what it does. So I'll say now, if I haven't emphasized in the past, I'll mention it to you again now. The primary purpose of the public utility law is to ensure the public's safety by permitting only experts in natural gas to design natural gas systems. I apologize if I haven't made this clear to the board in the past. Having said that, I want to put aside the legal requirements here for just a moment, and I want to ask each of you a simple question, just to think about before you make your decision. Legal requirements aside, do you think it's a good idea from a public safety standpoint for the board or the board engineer, who aren't experts in natural gas, and neither are they, to substitute their judgment for the judgment of the gas company that's been designing gas systems for more than 65 years? Does that make any sense to any of you? Because from a fundamental safety perspective, I'm just a little surprised, even the remote possibility that the board may be entertaining that idea. Given all the evidence that you've heard in the record to date, and all the undisputed expert evidence, and professional testimony you've heard in support of this application, NJNG submits that it has not just met, but it has indeed exceeded all the legal requirements in order for the board to grant approval of this application. And we hope that each one of you tonight will do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The hearing is closed, and now the board is going to have a discussion amongst itself on the record as to its thoughts, and then we'll have a vote. This is our discussion in terms of our view of the evidence and testimony and any comments. And so, does everybody have any thoughts they'd like to discuss?
I do. It was talked about the, our requirements, in weighing the pros and the cons, if it was proven that this was in the public interest, and it's been mentioned several times that there are no substantial detrimental effects to our community, and I disagree with that a little hardly. I actually do think there's evidence in the record that talks about negative effects. I asked Mr. Otto if perception can affect markets, and he said yes. There is clearly a perception here in our community that there would be, there will be an effect not only on the real estate values that are nearby, but on a going concern business that many of us in this community enjoy. So I do believe that there's evidence in the record for that. I do believe that perception does move markets, and there's clearly a negative perception as to how allowing this to come in could affect our community.
Well, I took a look at the sales that Mr. Otto supplied, and I can find paired sales that go not in direction. So for a sale that he introduces that shows that there's no effect, I can find a sale in another part of town with a similar house of age, size, condition, et cetera, that sold for hundreds of thousands of dollars more. So, I don't feel that testimony has weighed on wanting to consider that study. I don't think it supports the conclusion that the applicant wants us to reach. So, I agree with you, Chris. I don't feel that, I feel that we all have, that we, I have a concern, obviously you have a concern, that there's an economic impact on the community from having the regulator station there, and I don't feel the applicant introduced testimony to counter that feeling.
Well, you know, you guys kind of, you know, solidified my thoughts. I mean, the irony is, is that the regulator station, the permitted use of this property does allow for that to be there had there been no other use, no, nothing else that existed on this property. But the fact that it is a third-use variance, you know, we get discussing things like pollutants and that may not come into play otherwise.
It's not customary either for us to grant third-use variances. I, Dimitri's not here tonight, he's been on the board much longer than I have, but I've been here four years, we've never granted a third-use variance in that time period. So I'm concerned about, about that as well.
Well, the, you know, when we talk about, and I feel Mr. Skidmore made a very compelling argument, and I, and I promised the board I will never complain about a application for a shed ever again. But, you know, the substantial detriments, as we've discussed and as we've heard, a lot of the audience come and, and all give their opinions on, you know, we base it on facts from experts on both sides. Unfortunately, we have to go based on our experts, which do make some compelling arguments also. And, you know, there's no doubt that there's certainly a lot of uncertainties. I don't know enough about natural gas stations to be able to say what should or shouldn't be there, but I do know something. I also have been listening to a lot of the crowd moved from the city out to the suburbs. And when I moved out here, there was no doubt that my home was my single largest investment. And my fam, actually, my family was my single largest investment. My home was, was second to that. When I moved into town, I moved into a part of town that I knew I was faced with the sound of the parkway and the lights from the football field and some traffic in the morning from school, but, but I knew what I was up against. And that side of town, which tends to be a very quiet side of town, and those that are involved in the town know that they're very passionate about it being quiet and the cars that drive by and the crickets that make noise at night, they moved there for a reason. And there's no doubt about it that had they been aware of this regulator station, I can't help but feel that some of them may have made the decision not to be there. And unfortunately, you know, that's, that's just the way I see it, so. With that being said, I don't know if anyone else has anything else to add.
I have pages.
You do?
I mean, I can sum up my stuff when we vote, but I have, I have, could confine myself to three minutes like I did. I don't think that the gas company has established that this is an inherently beneficial use. As someone had pointed out, not the installation of a gas line, which would obviously be inherently beneficial use, that the community didn't have gas, but rather the issue was whether this is needed to enhance or continue the safe supply of gas to our community. And I wasn't convinced. I understand that there is freezing that goes on, but I don't remember hearing testimony that ugly, sporadic need to send somebody out to defrost that line. I just want to be remembered differently. I think that sporadically that they need to go out and defrost it, but it doesn't seem to be that it's such a regular schedule that it is necessary to have this equipment. And while I understand that the law doesn't allow us in particular to dictate what the terms of the application are going to be, it's difficult to reach a conclusion when we're left feeling that maybe there was other alternatives that were less burdensome to the community. And as Kenji pointed out, we cannot necessarily rely on the public utility to safeguard the interests of the community. The community needs to do that. And the gas company's primary mission is to make money. Its secondary mission, in my opinion, is deliver gas. So, I have to consider that application in that vein, and I am not convinced, because no testimony was presented to us despite the questions, that there wasn't another method of warming the gas available to the community that would be less burdensome. From an aesthetic perspective, despite the landscaping, I've looked at the other stations, they are not well-maintained, fence stacks are rusting, they are visible, and Homedale in particular is extremely concerned with the aesthetics of its community. It's extremely important to virtually everybody who lives in this town, and we pride ourselves on that. So the fact that it's going to be landscaped, again, as Mary Ann pointed out, will be on a side that is one of the sides where it's an easement that's not controlled by the applicant, and it can be made more visible, it may not be maintained, the shrubbery dies. Looking at the other sites, I don't have a strong faith in the applicant's ability to maintain its site the way we would want it to be maintained, to maintain the berm and the shrubbery. So, I was sort of not convinced by that. Environmentally, I'm relying on our expert, Mr. Pluses, who has raised concerns among us that there's a cumulative effect of these emissions that can be dangerous to our community, to the surrounding farm, to our air and our water, and there are not standards that we can rely on that protect us. So, I am relying on Mr. Pluses, even though he is not an expert. He is a highly educated and experienced engineer and expert in this field, that this is, has serious environmental concerns for our community. Also, the location, again, if that was not a requirement, I'm still not satisfied as to why it can't be further back on that site. We asked that question, we were told not within our purview, this is the site that was being presented to us. So I do think that it's possible that that location could have been set further back and possibly, you know, further reduce the emissions that were being omitted from the site, emitted from the site.
I would, I would echo some of the things you said. I'm feeling that even the smallest amount of pollutants, emitted over the course of a long period of time, are going to become a problem, whether they think they're not, it's going to happen. They're going to accumulate, they're going to accumulate, and that's what they do. There was talk about, a lot of testimony about you can't see the site. You also can't see the airborne pollutants, and you can't see what their effects are going to be 30 years down the road. And I don't see how any of that promotes general welfare. I think it's our obligation to protect the residents and the townships from any kind of pollutants. I don't care how small they are. That's my view.
Yeah, I think, I agree to some extent with the, I don't feel that was the largest issue here. I think the biggest issue for me was the third use, you know, the permitted third use for the site. I don't like that, and I don't agree with the, their criteria, you know, to allow the third use. It's, I don't believe it's the right area and the right, you know, the right part of Homedale to have an industrial use like this with neighboring communities, neighboring farms, whether it's a horse farm, or whether it's a vineyard, or just a crop, farm crop, it's, it's just, I don't believe it's conducive to the area, to the community, and I don't see it as inherent a benefit.
I also don't think they answered for us effectively why the other regulator stations, right, Greg, this was something that we had discussed, that there are other surrounding regulator stations, so why the Linkoff or the Coldsnack regulator station couldn't take over this need maybe even by enlarging the equipment?
Since they're on the same line.
Those sites, they're on the same line.
Since they're on the same high-pressure line.
Right. So that those sites perhaps could, whether they, those are smaller regulator stations than the ones that were proposing for Homedale. So why one of those regulator stations couldn't be enlarged to accommodate the needs of Homedale without installing another regulator station?
Or a combination.
Yep. And also, Mary Ann, you had made a lot of good points that I didn't mention, follow them specifically, but those also factor into the thoughts that I, the decision that I'm going to make here. So, I wanted specifically to reference-